Good evening. Welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regular meeting for July 20th, 2023. Since COVID, we have been running these meetings digitally using Zoom software. And so we welcome public participation. This is now our call to order. And let's actually all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm rising.
Pledge allegiance.
The United States of America. For which it stands.
Indivisible.
Justice for all.
I'm still glad we're unison, you know?
So now, do we have any such, the sunshine announcement, please?
Yes, in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act, notice has been given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, El Especialito, and posted with the city clerk on Tuesday, July 18th. We have the notices to be marked.
Okay, this will be B1 in evidence for this evening's meeting.
Excellent. Francisco, can we now have the roll call, please?
I see Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Aru.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioners Bookie.
Present.
Commissioner Park.
Yep.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Here.
And Vice Madam Chair Corin.
Yeah, here.
We have a total of nine commissioners present tonight.
Very good. And now we'll swear in staff.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you're about to give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Francisco, any relevant correspondence?
Other than the, the items that are adjourned for the August 10th meeting, all items in new business will be moving forward tonight. Just to repeat again, any item you see under adjournments will be carried with preservation of notice to the August 10th regular scheduled meeting.
Okay.
Very good. Alrighty, and no, and as you just mentioned, Francisco, that also means no further adjournments.
That is correct.
Okay, so off to new business. Are we, Vinnie, are we starting with the reorganization?
Yes.
Very good. So, due to some recent changes, we do have to vote on the zoning board of adjustments governance. So first, let's see if we have any nominees for Chair of the zoning board of adjustment.
Yes, I would like to.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
One at a time.
Over one another. What was that? You nominated Steve?
I'm nominating Kate. Don Lee for the chairwoman.
I very, with great love for you, I decline. I spent quite a bit of time as both Chair and Vice Chair. And it's also more than likely that I may not, they're trying to, I think, get some fresh blood in the zoning board for all the right reasons. So I think it's best to find decline. So, but thank you. I'm flattered.
Any other nominations?
I nominate Carl. I nominate Kathy Coyle for chairperson.
Great. Is there a second there?
Second.
Yeah.
Commissioner Allen, nominate Commissioner Coyle as a chairman, well, he a chairman and, oh, we doing one at a time or both?
Well, one at a time.
Okay, then I nominate.
Catherine has been nominated as a chair, she's been seconded, third, and fourth, I think. So shall we have any other nominations or should we vote on Catherine? We'll vote on Catherine. Are we all in agreement on that?
Yes.
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 And who opposed?
Yes. No.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm with you guys. Yeah, I'm okay.
Oh, you're with, oh.
Yes, it was, that was not a pose.
That was, no, that was a no, no problem. Okay.
So congratulations, Catherine.
Okay. Thank you.
Now we need a nomination for Vice Chair. Anybody?
I nominate Sonia.
Exactly.
I accept.
That's good.
All right.
Okay.
Any, any further nominations?
Nope, it's fine.
Carl, I was, I was going to nominate Carl, but you know, I would second or third, or fourth, Sonia, so.
Yep, I, yep, I appreciate it. You know, I'd be happy to do it. Obviously, been involved in a number of things, but I think Sonya's great.
Thank you. Okay, good. So whatever it is, fourth, fifth, I agree with that.
So we have Sonia, so we have Sonia as the Vice Chair. That's been nominated, seconded. Are we all in favor of that?
Yes. Hi.
Yeah.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Madam Vice Chair.
And Catherine, congratulations.
So, that's done. Catherine, I gather you're going to leave the meeting.
I'm leaving the meeting. Go back. Yeah, she's leaving the meeting.
Yes.
And I'm confident that Sonia will absolutely handle this meeting perfectly. I look, I look forward to working with all of you, but I also need your support and your help and your guidance, but I do, okay.
Great, so we'll see you next meeting, Catherine. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very good. Now, now Sonia, do you want to take over chairing this meeting?
Okay, unless you want to continue.
No, that works for me.
So before we do.
Ending the baton over.
Thank you.
Before we move on.
Thank you, everyone. Do I need to leave, Francisco?
Actually, Jeffrey had mentioned that he was going to leave earlier. Alternate. So Commissioner Allen, you can drop. We do have.
Nor you're with us, you're with us. Yes, because I won't be at the next one.
We do, Jeffrey, take care.
Vacation calls. All right, so where are we? We did the call, we did everything else, but where are we up to swearing in or no swearing?
Now we're on the new business. We're on the first case.
Yeah, okay.
We have seven commissioners present. And so the first case Sonia is number eight.
Okay, so the first case is Z22018, that's it?
The first case in new business is.
New business, yeah.
23-035. It's a one-year extension. The address is 360 Ogden Avenue. The applicant is pro se. Please raise your hands.
New business, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Okay.
I am promoting Glenn Stoffel.
And please, everybody, just watch talking over one another so we have a nice, clean record. Thank you.
I suggest that if we're not speaking, we ought to all mute ourselves.
Okay.
This way we don't talk over each other.
Thanks, Ben.
So Glenn Stoffel.
Hello, everybody.
Mr. Stoffel, would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
Yes.
Swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Could you state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address?
Glenn Stoffel. G L Y N, Stoffel is S T O F F E L, 360 Ogden Avenue.
Thank you.
So Glenn, you could proceed. Tell us why you're here and what we could do for you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate you taking some time and congrats to the new commissioners and I guess everybody, nice promotions.
Thank you.
First off, thanks for keeping us on the agenda. I know we got a notification about an hour ago to pay the fees. We did that and thank you for prioritizing this. We'll be brief. We're Glenn and Sabrina Stoffel, 360 Ogden. And per the letter that Sabrina sent you all, we're respectfully requesting an extension on case Z20053, I think is the number.
They're request three, yes.
This is an approval for an extension or expansion of a residential use with C variances granted to the original applicants, Stephen Fullup and Jacqueline Fullup, to expand the space 887 square feet. Was memorialized in September 24th, 2020. We purchased the property December 2021. That approval was a big part of our consideration to purchase the property. And since the purchase, we began to search for a contractor, but that search has proven to be more difficult than we anticipated due to COVID-19 and availability of folks. We've been unable to enter into contract for services of general contractor to date. The property does have some unique things in that it sits on the cliffside, so it's got some stilts, so there's some extra structural things, more people to try to find and try to corral into the job and therefore, you know, hard to get people pinned down to take on the job. So, and so per the COVID-19 Extension Act, as we're respectfully requesting to extend, we think one year from today would suffice, but you all are going to know way better than us. So if you think two years is more prudent, by all means, thank you. We'd use your guidance there. So that's what we have to say. Happy to answer any questions or.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just, for, for the record, I, for obvious reasons, I very much remember that application and it is, it is a very complicated plan. And I, I would imagine that it would be difficult to get the right contractors aligned. I would not be opposed to even granting a two-year extension. But, but certainly I'd be supportive of a one-year.
Okay. Would anybody be willing to vote?
There.
Motion for a two-year extension?
So is there any public?
I'll make a motion.
Let, we need to see if there were any public comments.
I'll get the hang of this.
Yep, you will.
At this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, so would anybody be willing to make a motion? I think we should do the two-year extension.
I'd be happy to make a motion. I, I will make a motion to grant a two-year extension for case Z23-035, address 360 Ogden Avenue.
Can I ask you a quick question? Just, like, in the, in the original documents, dash 053, on the agenda, it was 035, but when you click through to the link, it says it refers to 053 again. I just want to make sure there's no typo or some.
Let me just double check.
Yeah, Francisco, can you clarify that and then we'll put the right thing in. And, and also, Vinnie, just from a legal standpoint, the, in the agenda, it says a one-year extension. Can we grant a two-year extension?
Well, there's no notice in this case, so I can imagine we can because, because you can grant a two-year extension.
Okay.
And certainly if anybody thinks that's unreasonable, I, I just, I just remembered that application.
Can we have a second?
So the application is.
I will.
Z23-035.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Yeah, so a motion to, to grant a two-year extension for case Z23-035, address 360 Ogden Avenue, applicant Sabrina and Glenn Stoffel.
On the motion to approve a two-year extension, Commissioner Shadine.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown. You're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioners of Bookie.
Yes.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
And Vice Madam Chair Aru.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Stoffel. Take care. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
No problem. Take care. Good luck.
Okay, so we're moving on to our next case. Case Z23024, a two-year extension to 319 and 321 Old Bergen Road, and they're asking for a two-year extension.
Promoting Eugene O'Connell.
Thank you, Francisco. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Gene O'Connell and I'm representing the Ren LLC for a two-year extension. Mr., it was a notice case. I sent the publication and the notice to property owners, so.
Yeah, we have your notices. We'll mark them as A1. Bridget, I've lost you. Where are you?
Okay, this will be A1 in evidence for this application. Okay.
Hey, thank you, Bridget. So this is, was an application for 10 units at 319, 321 Old Bergen Road, which is back on March 4th, 2021. This project, like many others in Jersey City, really got hit with the trifecta. The first thing that happened was COVID, and that just delayed everything. Once they got out of COVID and he tried to get a contractor and materials, it was tough, tough to get a contractor and more importantly, all materials shot up in price, especially the price of wood. So then, once that occurred, recently, we had the inflation and the increase in financing. So when I applied, I was going to just apply for a one-year extension, but based on everything that happened to date and not knowing exactly what's going to happen in the future, we're seeking an application for a two-year extension for this case. So that's a presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Francisco, do we have, Francisco, do we have public comments?
Um, this time I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Commissioners? No question? Okay, so can I have a motion to extend the two-year extension for Z23024, 319, 321 Old Bergen Road? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
On a motion to approve a two-year extension, Commissioner Shadine. Oh, you're on mute.
Yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Patel.
Yes.
Commissioners of Bookie.
Yes.
Commissioner Park.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
Vice Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion carries all in favor.
Okay, good luck.
Thanks for your time and have a beautiful evening.
You're welcome.
Take care.
Take care, Jim.
Okay, so the next one, Francisco, is the appeal?
Yes, I am promoting quite a few people. Give me one second. I'm promoting Cynthia first. I am also going to promote Chuck, just. Cynthia, is there anybody specific on your team? I do see a bunch of hands raised, but I want to make.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Francisco. We have an engineer who, who is named Jeffrey Goll.
Okay.
And we have a planning expert named Carlos Rodriguez. And then we have two fact witnesses who will testify very briefly, Irene Borngraber and Kern Weissman.
See them. So I don't see those individuals' names, Cynthia, but.
I see Irene. It looks like you already promoted her.
Yeah, I promoted Irene, but the other individuals have names that I don't recognize.
Anthony Van Darck.
Oh, I'm just going to promote everyone. So we can figure this out.
Okay, thanks. Thanks very much.
Okay, so Cynthia, before we start, you, you did have notices for this case. And your affidavit, your proof of service, notice of publication, and Bridget will mark that as A1.
And this will be A1 for this application this evening. A1 in evidence.
Cynthia, then I have one more comment.
Okay.
I know Chuck is here, so maybe we could talk to you and Chuck for a moment because I'm not, I, I read, I read Tanya's letter.
Right.
Who's relying on things that Chuck sent her. And so where are we now? What, what, what is the issue we're trying to resolve and how are we going to resolve that unless Chuck has his experts here? And we make a determination of what expert is right.
Right, well, let's see if he has his experts here.
I, I do have my experts here.
Okay. Am I right? Is that what we're looking at? The, the two experts as the, the competing expert testimony?
I can see my engineer here and just, we got to round up our, our planner.
Mr. Harrington, do you have any of your experts?
I do. I have my engineer, my surveyor, my planner, and my architect. But, you know, my, my understanding was, you know, the zoning officer and city engineering agreed with our interpretation and then Ms. Hagiannis and her client are, are appealing this because they, they disagree with the conclusions in our analysis.
Oh, okay, and I see our other expert here, so I think we're in good shape now.
I just want to make one comment. For those individuals that have their hands raised and are not a part of the professionals, please lower your hand. It is quite confusing to be promoting people that I can't really tell what their name is or because I see it using me. Thank you.
Stephen Costner is our surveyor.
Okay, thank you so much. Because I, I did try to promote two other people, but they declined and now their hands have went down. Thank you.
And Brian Libsken, he's our engineer.
Oh, I do.
And, oh, you have Carolyn up here already and Anthony.
And then Cynthia and both Cynthia and Chuck, please let me know if there's anyone you recognize on the screen and if they are part of your members. I got the right people.
Yeah, there's only one name I don't recognize, but maybe that's one of Chuck's people, Stephen Costner?
Yeah, he's the surveyor.
Oh, okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So before we jump into this, do you think you two attorneys can try to guide the board and tell us what we're looking at? And you know why we're here? I understand why we're here, but what's the issue that you want us to decide?
Yeah, so just briefly, I'm here on behalf of River View Neighborhood Association. This is a zoning appeal of a decision made by the city's acting zoning officer. And for those of you who may not know that, that our zoning officer is also Tanya Marion, the city's planning director. She wears two hats. So this has to do with the Palisade Protection Overlay District. We refer to it as the PPOD. It's a zoning overlay that was first adopted in 2001 and as its name suggests, the overlay was designed to protect the Palisades cliffs. This is on our zoning map, which you've all probably seen before. But it extends all the way from Montgomery Street at its southern boundary up to Union City at its northern boundary and it envelops the Palisades cliffs. So the, the ordinance is very clear. It requires a 30-foot setback for any construction at the top of the cliff. And we're here because an application was submitted for a development project at 152 Ogden Avenue by Chuck Harrington's client. That application did not identify that any variance approval was needed in order, as required under the PPOD. The zoning officer accepted the representations in that plan and the zoning analysis in its zoning table as accurate as far as she could tell. She kind of wasn't totally sure because she, she did qualify her statement saying, I'm not an engineer and we haven't had an engineer look at this. But she did say the application could proceed and she was not going to flag the required variance. So we're here tonight because we believe, and you'll hear from our experts, that a variance should be required in order for this application to proceed. And we would like this board to enforce the Palisade Protection Overlay District as, as the city intended when it first adopted the ordinance in 2001.
Chuck, what do you say?
Sure, yeah. Thank you. For the record, Charles Harrington of Coll Foley on behalf of the applicant. So, yeah, there is a disagreement here as to the interpretation of where, where the setbacks are from. As Cynthia noted, there, there are certain criteria in the PPOD, the Palisade Protection Overlay District that requires certain setbacks from the Palisade cliff face and, and from sloped area within, within the, the Palisades areas that are on top of the cliff. And that's, that's really kind of the crux of it here because there's a minimum required setback from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff. Then there is a minimum required setback from the edge of, from the cliff face at the base of the cliff. So you have setbacks that are required from the cliff face at the top of the cliff and at the base of the cliff. You also have a minimum required setback from steep-sloped areas, which they define as 30% grade or more. You can't have a structure within 10 feet of that. There are two other setbacks that are, or, or there's another, there's another setback with, with required, with regard to height, that's not relevant here. Nor is the, the setback that I referred to from the cliff face at the base of the cliff. So that the issue really here in the disagreement is, is we, we think it's pretty clear from the language of the PPOD that you have to be 30 feet back from the cliff face. Okay, and we, and we have that, and actually you'll see in our, in our testimony, we're, we're actually pretty conservative in, in what we're defining as a cliff, cliff face here. And we have the required 10 feet from the 30% sloped area. I believe the appellant's contention is that the top of the cliff is part of the cliff face. So they're extending that area further in.
I don't want, I actually would prefer not to have Chuck characterize our presentation. I prefer that the board here.
I want to understand what we're doing here.
Yeah.
I think the board wants to understand this as well. I can't, I can't, I can't understand it from the papers that are.
Great.
Performing, and you're allowed, Cynthia, you can rebut anything he wants to say. I, I, I'm not taking whatever Chuck says as gospel. I'm just trying to narrow the issue here. I'm trying to understand in my mind, why do we have planners here if this is a surveying question? Is it more of a surveying question or is it just a surveyor's question?
It's a question about how the setback requirement in the ordinance should be applied in this particular geographic location for this particular project.
Why, why isn't it just set, you know, what, what Tanya says in her letter? The minute, the minimum building setback line from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff shall be 30 feet. Is there an argument with that?
Uh, yeah, I think as you heard Chuck just say, they don't, they're not taking the top of the cliff into consideration. They're measuring from the face of the cliff. And we think the, the ordinance language at the top of the cliff is really what's operative here. You cannot just ignore that. And it makes a big difference as to where you can put the building and whether a variance is required.
So that is, and I won't paraphrase Ms. Hagiyanis's position here, but that's my understanding that the crux issue here is where does that 30-foot setback start? Is it at the cliff face? We believe that's clear, that it's from the cliff face, which is clear within the ordinance. Or in our understanding is that the appellant's position is that it's not from the cliff face. It's from the cliff face, including the top of the cliff area, so that bleeds into the property. And so they would start the 30-foot setback further into the property. And that's really, I think, summarily, you know, where the disagreement is.
And what's important about this is this is about the enforcement of this ordinance. We, Riverview Neighborhood Association, would like to see the city enforce this ordinance. It feels it's of critical importance. This actually protecting the Palisades was one of the catalysts for the formation of the Neighborhood Association. And they don't want the city planner sort of saying, well, you know what? We're just gonna rely on whatever the developer thinks is good enough. Because if that were the case, we wouldn't need city planners reviewing anybody's plans for zoning compliance. So we feel that it was incumbent upon the zoning officer to flag this issue and require a variance in order to enforce our city's ordinance.
And conversely, we believe we're compliant and there's no variance required.
Okay, and Chuck, in your view, it's 30? You do have the compliance setback, but it's 30 feet back from the cliff face, not from necessarily kind of the highest piece of ground along the cliff, the edge of the cliff?
Right, because I mean, you're gonna hear tonight what the definition of the cliff face is, probably from, you know, from both sides, you know, and very quickly, it's defined as a sheer, nearly vertical slope of exposed bedrock. So we think.
But the ordinance uses the word "top of cliff."
Yeah, but it says you have a cliff face at the top of the cliff and you have a cliff face at the bottom of the cliff.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so I, uh, then you do, do you want Chuck and I to keep talking or should we let our experts take over?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just trying to wrap my head around what we're going to do here.
Yeah, and I know.
Yeah, so, so, so I think that, I think we're interpreting the ordinance to see if Tanya's interpretation was consistent. But in doing that, I mean, we just have the appeal papers before us and not the original plan, so that would need to be entered into evidence and we need to understand that, right?
Yeah, and those, I believe Cynthia sent those plans over today. I mean, I sent them into Ms. Marion as part of my request for the interpretation. So she had the architectural plans, engineering plans, and survey as well as the land form analysis and engineers report, so.
And the statute actually requires, when an appeal is filed, that the zoning officer's file is supposed to be transmitted to the board. Now, with the way things work with the portal, maybe that didn't happen the way it might normally happen, but it should be in front of the board.
But we can still look at it during.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so should we start with the experts and kind of get the ball rolling? So, who are you calling first?
So I'd like to call our engineer, Jeffrey Goll. And Jeff, we can't see you right now, okay?
Okay, will you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name for the record, please.
Sure, my first name spelled G E O F F R E Y, Jeffrey. Middle initial M, last name Goll, G O L L.
Thank you.
And Mr. Goll, would you give the board the benefit of your education and your licensing?
Sure. I graduated from Rutgers University with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in 1990. And I have a master's degree from the University of Wisconsin. I received an engineering management from in 2013. I have, I'm licensed to practice professional engineering in the state of New Jersey. I have my license in good standing. I'm also licensed in nine other states and the District of Columbia in professional engineering.
And have you testified before this board before?
I have not.
Okay, have you testified before other boards?
Yes, I have. I have testified before, most recently, the Howell Township in Monmouth County Planning Board, Wall Township in Monmouth County, Reddington Township in Hunterdon County. I've worked for the town of Princeton down in Mercer County. And I can keep going, but I have a lot of experience with planning boards.
Yeah, that will accept this fine qualifications, yes. Okay, okay, excellent, thank you. So. So Mr. Goll, what did you review in preparation for your, the report that you prepared?
So in the preparation of this review, I looked at the Jersey City ordinance specifically under 345-6 definitions. I also reviewed the Palisades Preservation Overland District 345-60.1. I reviewed the preliminary and final site plan application for 152 Ogden, 11 sheets, last revised February 14, 2023. I also reviewed the prior version of the same, of plans of the same. And I also reviewed the engineering report prepared by Dresden Robyn. They're both the plans and the report planned by Dresden Robyn. I also reviewed the proposed eight-story four units residential structures, the architectural plans prepared by MBMK. And I also reviewed the plan titled the Topographic Survey, prepared by Stephen Costner, last revised February 2, 2023. And among other things, some photographs provided to me as well by my client.
Okay, great. So without, you know, further introduction, do you want to explain your analysis?
Sure. So as was being discussed earlier, the crux of the situation that's before you today is identification of the location of the 30-foot setback from the, from the top of the cliff or from the, as measured in the ordinance. And if I may, I'm not sure, Cynthia, if the other documents were entered as exhibits, but the first thing I'd like to do is go over the conceptual cross-section of a cliff system. And if I can share that on my screen, I think that'll help shed some light, at least in comparison to the definitions of how we're interpreting the ordinance.
Yeah, we had, we had sent them over to the planning department and Chuck was copied on that earlier today and can, I'll move them into evidence after you've explained the, your exhibit.
Okay, so I will, let's see. Post entire, here we go, screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, can everybody see my mouse over the pointer over the top of the diagram as well?
Yes, but it is glitching.
Okay. Might be glitchy because I'm running it around, but I'll slow down on that. So one of the things that we're really discussing here is, under ordinance 345-60, 60.1 point C. And just to be clear too, what I'm going to be talking about is both the definition of the, or at least my interpretation of the definition of the ordinance, as well as and understanding what that means, but also the geotechnical engineering aspects of why the setback should be considered where it is. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is the, we have the definition or the setback requirement of 30 feet. The minimum setback line from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff shall be 30 feet. And so this is an idealized section. This is not the specific site. I just wanted to provide an illustration of what I call basically the entire cliff. And the distinction here too is it talks about the cliff face. That does not mean it's the cliff. It's just the vertical portion. And so when you look at the definitions in the ordinance, the cliff face is a sheer, nearly vertical slope of exposed bedrock, and that's under the definition in the ordinance. But it also talks about the top of the cliff, or excuse me, the top of cliff. And it is the portion of the hill located above the cliff face. And one of the things I want to be clear about is is the applicants or the council had discussed about how the cliff face is the cliff. And it's not, it's the cliff face. It's the vertical portion.
Put it in front of you, but it seemed like the mouse is running all over the map and I don't know where you are pointing.
Yeah.
So can you please fix that?
Yeah, it's like all these little tiny hands are appearing.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that.
I think you were trying to emphasize the definition, and when you do that, all these little hands appear.
Right, I'm gonna, alright.
So maybe if you just speak to it. Sorry.
Alright, so I'm gonna stop moving my, I'll direct you verbally to where these areas are. So it talks about the minimum building setback line from the, and it's at the top, from the edge of the cliff face, or from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff shall be 30 feet. And a distinction to be made is where you see I've labeled the bedrock and that vertical section, that is the cliff face. It is the vertical component of the cliff. It's not necessarily the cliff. It's part of the cliff, but it's not everything. It's the face of the cliff. The other part of the definition, when you look at the bottom, and that's included in the ordinance, is the top of the cliff is the portion of the hill located above the cliff face, overlaying with regolith. Regolith, by the way, it means like fractured rock and their soil and things like that. You know, not, it's the unconsolidated portion of the system here. Overlaying with regolith, generally the plateau or hill crest. And so on the right, you'll see I have a bracket that really talks about that there's several different components to this cliff. You'll notice too, at the bottom, there's a term I've identified into that gray triangle called the talus slope. Now, a talus slope or talus is not defined in the ordinance, but it's the geologic term, the landscape term, for when rock falls off a cliff and you ever, if you've driven along the Palisades or you've seen it and there's a pile of rocks at the bottom, that's usually, that's called the talus. And so there's usually a pile of rocks at the bottom. And I'm just trying to be complete here. And so you have these portions of it. In addition, there's a line between, a horizontal squiggly line between the cliff face and the top of cliff, you'll see, above the bedrock. I will try to just put my arrow there and leave it. And that is the, an interface between two different types of material. You've got rock underneath and you've got the unconsolidated material. And that's important because that is one of the locations where if you think about slipping, you know, two surfaces slipping against each other, that's where on slopes on the top of the cliff could potentially fail. So what there's called potential debris flows. And the circular pattern is how usually when these, when these earthen systems fail, they actually make a bowl shape. One of the other items that was brought to my attention was down the street. I think it's a 242 Ogden. There was a failure of the slope up at that, behind the building at that location. And there's actually a fence around it that surrounds it, and that's what happened. The top of cliff failed. It slid off and it almost went up to the building at that location. And so that's one of the hazards associated with the Palisades and building within the area of the Palisades. I also wanted to show another term, a rock slide or a rock fall. So in the middle, you'll see there's like a little gray odd shape there that's with an arrow falling. And so when pieces of a vertical cliff break off, either through frost, earthquakes, or whatever, or other activity, the pieces fall off and it forms that talus on the bottom. The talus can also fail at the bottom and you'll see the debris flow. And so that's also can fail because it's an unconsolidated material made up of broken rock. I also wanted to point out at the bottom, just talking about the hazards of, that's identified by the Hudson County Hazard Mitigation Plan in 2020, that just talk about like areas of weak slopes that are prone to failure. And things like rain, stockpiling of rock, waste piles, or man-made structures may stress weak slopes to failure. I'm sorry? Okay, so I wanted to point that out. And the reason being is, and if you look at the logic of, from a geotechnical standpoint, you've got this cliff where in the outer bracket that has parts. And the cliff is made up of the, well, the technical geologic term talus slope, not in the ordinance, but then there's the cliff face, which is in the ordinance. And it does say it's a sheer, nearly vertical slope. And that's important to remember when we discuss a little further down the line. But then the upper part of the cliff is literally called the top of cliff. And so that is also a portion of the cliff. And so therefore, when you, when we look at the minimum setback line from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff shall be 30 feet. And so when you talk about where the top of the cliff is, it is this portion, but it's also all the way to the top. And it only makes logical sense if, granted, this is a non-scaled version, but if you can imagine that 30 feet was moved over to the right and lined up with the cliff face, you're still left with a hazard almost immediately outside of that 30 feet. And actually, within the 30 feet, if that slope is longer or wider than 30 feet horizontally. Why is this important? As I said, at 242 Ogden, which I believe one of the fact witnesses will share with you the photograph, that top potential debris flow has occurred, and this is not unprecedented. So I'm going to share another diagram, which was, I believe, was also submitted. Can people see that? So the bottom, and I'm gonna avoid using my mouse, but at the bottom left, you'll see the red outline. Can everybody see that? That's the subject property. The development is specifically going to be going on to the lower, sort of, it's a, let's call it a backwards L. It's going to be going on to the bottom of the L in that location over there, off of Ogden. But these are documented landslides and debris flows that have occurred in the past. Some of them are pretty old. Some of them are not so old. You'll see in the, there was in 1935, about 1,200 feet to the north, there was a rock slide in 1941, about 1,971 feet north of the site on the same formation. There was another rock slide. But then in 2011, there was another rock slide at 2,120 feet to the north and another one at 1,178 feet back in 2013. And so when you look at these types of hazards, they're real. This is not something, this is not an ordinance issue. It's a public safety issue, if you will. So when you're really trying to look at that ordinance, you want to be extremely, not just conservative, but also reflecting how these cliff systems function. It's similar to a wetland. You know, if you have a wetland and there's a transition area, you know, they require, for example, 50 feet. They want that 50 feet to make sure that you. They want that fifty feet to make sure that you don't make the mistake and damage the wetland. And, and it's the same thing here. That thirty feet is there to create this buffer to keep people safe. And for example, an eight-story building, to keep the people in that building safe from a potential landslide that might occur. If it was set back from that thirty feet and there may have been, and there is a landslide or a rock fall, then at least that building will be in a safe location. So, when you look at the applicant's plans, and I'm going to, so that's where you look at these, the, the slides, the debris flows. That's where you're talking about these things occurring. And it also, as I mentioned at two forty-two, Ogden, something similar happened to this up here. And sorry, I, I keep forgetting that the mouse might be an issue here. I'm going to go to the engineering report. No, excuse me, the engineering plans. Okay, and I'm gonna go down to the sheet. This is the most, the latest set of plans, by the way. And the other thing I'm gonna mention is a concern about how the applicant identified the sheet here. So, this is the, this is sheet C eight eleven. And I use this sheet in my report to talk about the slopes. One of the things I want to point out is, look, if you look at the profile above, I don't, there is no sheer face. There's no vertical or sheer face associated with this. And this is gonna be another important aspect of the issue of identifying where that thirty feet lies. And so, when you look up here, and pardon me, is, is my mouse still an issue? Okay, so if you look at this slope, there is no vertical slo, sheer face on this slope. And that's gonna be important. And here's the top of the, what I call the top in, of the hill or the cliff in this location. And I'll explain why that's an issue and I'll show you in my report. So, this is my report that was submitted to the board. And I'm gonna zoom in. How do we zoom in here? Sorry, bear with me a second. Okay, so, it should be a little better. So, this was taken from that set of plans, that sheet. And what the applicant did is they measured, they said there is some exposed rock over here in this location. That's what this hatch line is here. That's what this hatch line is here. And the orange is, means a slope in excess of thirty percent. And then, the yellow is, is not quite as steep, but it, it, the green is basically essentially flat. So, the top of the, of this, the slope over here is really going around in this line here. And so, what I'm saying is that the applicant chose this location. And if you recall, there is no sheer face. I believe, in my, my professional opinion, that this may be either historic rubble or rock or maybe the old talus slope, but it's on a slope. It's not actually the exposed rock face. And if, even if it was, it's still not falling in the definition of a cliff face. Because if you remember, the definition of a cliff face says a sheer or nearly, a vertical or nearly vertical surface of exposed rock. So, and I know, we're gonna be talking, we're talking a lot here about a lot of different things. And I'm just trying to, so, and if anybody has questions, they can always interrupt me. The applicant has shown that thirty feet.
Excuse me, you're going back to multiple.
Okay, I'll stop.
Yeah.
You'll see my oval where it says incorrect measurement.
Yes.
And that is a, it's hard to read. It's small. It's from the plan. But that is the thirty feet. So, they measured that thirty feet from that rock locate, that, what they call their exposed rock. But what's interesting, in the prior version of the plans, they actually didn't even use that. I think it was further down where there was like an old routine wall or other structure where they measured it off of there. So, there's a bit of an inconsistency in how the applicant is defining, the applicant's engineers defining or trying to pick or trying to find where that slope occurs. Now, Cynthia, will you be sharing the, the photo of the, of the trolley at, at later on? Where, is that something you would like me to share? You're, you're muted.
Sorry, yeah, it would be easier if you share it, but.
One of the reasons I wanted to show this is, it's important to understand the context of why there's a sheer face that's likely missing from this cliff. So, I'm going to pull up. This is a photo, this is provided to me by my client. The River View Association. And this is the, the trolley line that used to come up here and connect up here to Ogden. As I understand this, and I'm sorry about the mouse again, on the left side, just to the left of that red building, is the likely location of where our subject site is. And what happened is that, the, 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 the cliff in that location had likely been modified or buried with material to create a hillside. Why is that important? It's important because the cliff's in there somewhere. The, or, excuse me, the cliff face is in there somewhere. We just don't know where it is. And the applicant hasn't described exactly where that sheer or vertical face is located on that hill. And so, when we go back to the plan, back to, here we go. When we go back to this diagram, that is the slope there. Actually, I'll go back to the plan. And I, again, if I, I do apologize if, oh, sorry, I'm trying to get to the right diagram here, report. So, when we go to this set of plans again, you'll notice on the upper cross-section or profile, that slanted line in the yellowish or beige or orange location is sort of, if you remember that photograph, that's that slope that they probably buried in this. So, the reason I'm saying that, and I'm gonna posit this to the board, is at a minimum, I don't believe the, the applicant has found where that the cliff face is, number one. And so, by, it's, that's a concern because we're not even sure if you were to use the cliff face as the, as the defining location to start that thirty feet. We don't even know if that thirty feet that they identified is far enough up the slope. My contention is it's not, because you're still looking at it. If they're saying that that is the, the, the cliff face, it kinda goes against the definition of what cliff face is because it has a slope to it. And so, when you look at it, that's why, in my professional opinion, you should be measuring the, oops, you should be measuring the cliff, the setback from the left of that yellow shading. It's where the, the, basically, the, the crest or the, the crest of that hill as defined in the ordinance begins. And if that's the case, you'll see that the building needs to be shifted to the left or, or to the northwest, if you will, based in its, you know, the direction that it needs to go. So, that's, I mean, as, as narrow as my focus was in this hearing, that's, that's where I'm, I'm trying to show you that, that from, it's not just, you can't just simply look at the ordinance definition, which I think you can look at and understand where I made the argument that that's where the thirty feet is. But from a geotechnical, a geologic hazard standpoint, that setback that I'm providing with the evidence of the other, other landslide features and the landslide that occurred at two forty-two makes perfect sense. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I just had a follow-up question for you, Jeff. So, the starting, so, so the place where you identified the starting point for the thirty-foot setback, could you just summarize, you know, how you identified that starting point?
So, that's where the slope, and I'll go back to the engineering plan again, up here. And I'm gonna put my mouse here and leave it. So, you'll see where it says mild. The top of the, the, is twenty-two point seven percent on the top in the profile. That's where the top of cliff, if you will, meets the plateau as per the definition, where, or hillside.
Thanks.
Thank you. So, where are you saying, if you don't mind, it should be? It should be at the top, or, well, the left side of, of the yellow. The, the yellow, if you will, hat, hatching on the top of that slope. And then you'll see. Yeah, it, it starts at the green area on the right. And so, when you look at the bottom plan view, that's where it starts. And the most, I'll call it inland or, or to the left leaning location is where that curve, as in my other diagram on my report, shows it right there. That's where the, the top of cliff meets the plateau. At a minimum, the applicant should be, should then be required to find where the cliff face is. If, in fact, that is their contention is where it starts.
Okay, and Jeff, just to clarify for the record, the, the arrow that you have on there, the red arrow that says thirty feet, that's what you contend the setback should be?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have another? Have another?
We do, we do, we do. We have a professional planner to testify. Does, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Goll?
I do. And are, are you gonna mark these exhibits, Cynthia?
Yeah, um, okay, so, I, I would like to, to mark the report dated May nineteenth that was submitted to the, to city planning a while ago, I guess as a one, or, yeah. Sorry, sorry about that. And then, the concept of the cliff section, if we could mark that as a three. And then, the, the past landslide records, we could mark as a four. And historic photo, a five. And I, I, if we could actually move those into evidence, I, I now, so I don't forget at the end of the hearing, that would be.
Should I stop sharing?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're finished. Thank you. So, I don't, I don't know, Vinnie, do I need to make a formal motion to?
Oh, no, what, that'll be in evidence. It's, that's, this is a zoning board hearing, but.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We're not doing this as the way we normally do it. This is more of a technical hearing. But Chuck, do you want to question?
I, I do have a few questions. So, Mr. Goll, I heard you testify numerous times that there, there are different components of a cliff, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and, and in your, your concept plan marked A three, which, which is, is being offered as just a concept plan. It's not depictive of, of the property before us, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, in, in A three, your concept plan, you, there is a distinct difference between the, a cliff face and where you define the top of the cliff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And you testified that in this instance, there is no cliff face at all here or no sheer face. Is that correct? Or no sheer drop here. Is that correct?
Well, it, it would appear that the, by the definition, there's a cliff face that is, is buried under the historic fill.
Yeah, but you, you, you testified that there is no sheer face here at all. No sheer.
No sheer face exposed as, as I, as far as I understand.
Okay. And did you do any independent analysis of, of the, the property?
I mean, other than reviewing the applicant's materials and, and looking at the photos and some of the historic information, that was the limit of my, my review.
Okay, so you didn't do any, any analysis as to the stability of, of the property or, or any parts of the cliff, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and did you visit the site?
I have not, no.
Okay, so, so this is all based upon what you reviewed on paper. Is that correct?
I assume that the information your engineer provided is accurate and reflects the existing conditions on the site.
Okay, and you're, you showed a, a photo of the landslides. Or your, your A four is your exhibit with the landslides. And am I correct that your concern would be how close a building is to the cliff? And that, that could, might create a dangerous condition?
Correct, as well as not being in compliance with my interpretation of the ordinance.
Okay, and are you aware that there is a building directly to the north of, of this property, a multifamily building? That, that sits out much further than, than what is being proposed as part of this project?
I, I reviewed aerial photographs and I, I do believe there were buildings that were constructed, either, I don't know. I'm, I'm assuming they predated the ordinance.
Okay, and, and should we be concerned about those buildings being in a dangerous condition based upon your testimony?
You know, they should probably, you know, do some inspections of those buildings every once in a while, and I'm sure they do.
Okay, but did, just, yeah, last, just, I'm sorry to be redundant, but we, we agree that there's, there's no, under, under the existing conditions, there is no sheer nearly vertical slope of exposed bedrock at this property as it currently exists. Correct?
At the surface, there does not appear to be, it appears to be filled with historic fill.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions, Mr. Wapag.
I just have a, I just have a quick redirect though. If, if there. How much does that matter to your analysis, Jeff? Like whether there's the, any sheer rock at some place on the, on the, on the portion identified in the applicant's plans as the slope? Does that, does that alter your analysis of where, where the thirty feet should start?
No, and as a matter of fact, you know, like I said, to err on the side of caution, it is likely that there is a sheer face somewhere under that fill. And I would not want the building to be too close to that. And I believe the ordinance has that setback requirement to ensure that there's a, a buffer, if you will, to where maybe that is. But I also don't believe, agree with my definition or not, or my, of where that should be. The applicant has appeared to have also provided some inconsistent locations based on a prior version of the plan, showing the thirty feet in one location and now showing it in another. And then, in the most current one, it still doesn't make, make sense of where they started because there's, they're not starting it, if you look at their interpretation of, of a cliff face, starting it there. In fact, it just seems to start in the middle of the hill somewhere.
And, and what, but what's your, your analysis, my understanding is your analysis is focused on the top of the cliff. So, does, does it debate about exactly where the cliff face is or whether it exists or not? Does that, how does that, does that have any impact on your analysis of where the setback should begin?
No, not at all.
Okay, so, are there any more questions for Mr. Goll? Okay, so, we have our planning expert up next, Carlos Rodriguez.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state and spell your full name for the record.
Carlos Rodriguez, R O D R I G U E S.
And if you could just keep your voice up, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Are, are you having trouble?
You're just a little.
Little thing.
Yes.
I don't know that there's any way on my end that I can increase.
Speak up louder then, that's all.
Very good. I'll try to project.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, could you, uh, give the board the benefit of your, uh, background and your licensing?
I can. I have a master's in city and regional planning from Rutgers. Uh, I've been a licensed professional planner in New Jersey for over thirty years. I'm thirty-five years, I think. I also taught at Rutgers for a long time in the graduate planning program. I'm a past president of the New Jersey chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm a member of the College of Fellows of the American Institute of Certified Planners. And I'm the editor of the latest edition of the Complete Guide to Planning in New Jersey.
And your license is current?
It is very current.
Have you testified in front of this board before?
I have not.
Okay. Have you testified in front of other zoning boards in New Jersey?
Last night.
Okay.
Most recently.
Okay. So, um, does the board accept, uh, Mr. Rodriguez's qualifications?
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um. Uh, Mr. Rodriguez, did you just want to briefly summarize what you looked at in order to prepare for the hearing tonight?
Uh, well, I pretty much everything that Jeff looked at, although I'm sure he looked at, that. Some of the technical stuff more closely than I did. Um, but I also looked at the, uh, the city's master plan. Um, and I looked at a comparable ordinance, overlay ordinance. That is in effect in Union City. Uh, I looked at some old publications from the Regional Plan Association having to do with the palisades. I think that's about it.
Okay, great. So do you want to know?
Did I get started?
Sure, yes.
Okay, so in my opinion. And I hope your, your opinion as well. Mr. Gall's testimony has established that a portion of the proposed building. Is within the required thirty foot setback from top of cliff. And this leads me to the inevitable conclusion that a C or bulk variance is in fact required for this project as currently presented. But the required variance has not been identified as such in the applicant's plans. Nor has, nor was it flagged as an issue by the city's acting zoning officer. And given the nature of the PPOD, the, the PPOD regulations, this would not be a routine request. From a minimum setback, as the purpose of the request is not to simply preserve privacy or lighten air. But rather public safety and the welfare of the public. Now, under the powers of zoning boards section of the municipal land use law. The law authorizes and directs the zoning boards to hear and decide appeals. Where it is alleged by the appellant that there is error in any order, requirement, decision or refusal. Made by an administrative officer based on or made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance. And that's what we're doing here today. The same section of the municipal land use. There's a separate provision that assigns to zoning boards the authority to hear and decide requests for interpretation. Of the zoning map or zoning ordinance. And it, it seems to me that this case may qualify under both the provisions. Of A, the first one that I recited, or B of the same article. So to recap, in this case, the applicant requested a zoning determination from the acting zoning officer. The applicant was seeking official confirmation that the site plan application, which stated no variances were required under the PPOD. Was in fact accurate. In a letter dated May eighteen, twenty twenty-three, the acting zoning officer indicated that. She does not have the professional qualifications and expertise to interpret the provisions. Of the PPOD as they applied to the site in question. And argued that it's perfectly fine to rely on the representations made by the applicant's architect. And engineer who are duly licensed professionals. That zoning determination letter reads in part. Neither the division of zoning nor the division of city planning have any licensed engineers on staff to review the accuracy. Of the civil engineering plans. The division of city planning relies on the division of engineering to provide comments on any of the engineering submittals. Therefore, the standard practice of this division is to rely on the signed and sealed plans and exhibits provided. By the applicant's experts. The burden of proof is always on the applicant. The plans and reports submitted by your client were signed and sealed by a licensed professional engineer. So there is no reason for this division to not accept the provided information. This was in the zoning officer's letter. Now, we don't know whether the applicant's professionals have any prior work experience with the provisions of the PPOD. And it also strikes me that if we were to routinely rely on the representations made by professionals working for applicants. With no independent verification, we probably wouldn't need a zoning officer. There is nothing that I can find in the municipal land use law that authorizes a zoning officer to withhold independent judgment. And to essentially delegate its authority to an applicant's professionals. This seems to me to be a failure to carry out the zoning officer's official responsibilities. Now, in the publication, New Jersey's Zoning and Land Use Administration. Which is commonly referred to as the Cox book. The authors indicate that in cases such as this one, the zoning officer may refer the matter to the zoning board. Him or herself. In other words, in the event the zoning officer, for whatever reason, is not able to make a determination. Regarding a zoning matter, they should appropriately refer the matter to the zoning board for adjudication. In the same letter referred to previously, the zoning officer indicates that the matter has been referred to the city's engineering department. Which likely would have greater expertise in the matter, but no response had been received to date. The letter reads, "In the interest of time and statutory requirements. I am providing this letter determining that the plans submitted by your experts are accepted as correct and accurate. However, I have additionally reached out to the division of engineering to conduct another review of your submittal. And have asked them to provide a memo to the planning board to either verify or dispute your expert's submittals." Again, while there is nothing wrong with consulting other professionals working for the city, the responsibility vested. In the zoning officer under the law cannot be delegated. And if the zoning officer is unsure how to proceed, they should refer the matter to the zoning board. Now, in a separate section of the municipal land use law. Appeals and applications to the Board of Adjustment, the law provides that appeals to the Board of Adjustment. May be taken by any interested party affected by any decision of an administrative officer of the municipality. Based on or made in the enforcement of the zoning ordinance or official map. And these two provisions of the municipal land use law, by the way, are reflected in comparable provisions found in the city's zoning code. Now, it's not entirely clear to me why the municipal land use law contains two mechanisms, the appeal and the interpretation. To seemingly achieve the same objective. But it is clear that the municipal land use law views the zoning boards as the bodies charged with adjudicating these matters. And it, and that it wants to guarantee seemingly more than one avenue. For interested parties to seek adjudication. Now, the other point I would like to make has to do with the PPOD. The twenty twenty-one Jersey City Master Plan says that the PPOD is mapped along the palisades from Montgomery Street. To the Union City boundary and imposes height setback. And performance standards in addition to the underlying zoning provisions. In order to preserve the cliff face of this significant geological structure. This is on page seventy-eight. Interest in preserving and regulating development along the palisades dates back to the nineteen sixties. The nineteen sixty-six publication from the Regional Plan Association with the title. The Lower Hudson argued that development should not be allowed on the cliff, on the cliff face. And that buildings carelessly placed on the cliff edge are a serious mistake. The same publication also argued that the state of New Jersey should work with the palisades municipalities. To develop a joint plan for preserving and protecting the palisades. Now, this didn't come to pass, but individual palisades towns eventually adopted their own preservation mechanisms. And the PPOD is Jersey City's version. Section three forty-five dash sixty point one of the Jersey City zoning code is the pertinent section for the PPOD. Which was established over twenty years ago and recodified in two thousand and seven. It indicates that the overlay district is subject to special regulations in addition to those. Regulations established in the underlying zone. It indicates that all uses permitted in the zone or redevelopment plan in which the property is located. Shall be permitted in the PPOD. Provided however, that the setback and procedural regulations and performance standards of this article. Shall apply to any such uses, whether permitted as of rights by conditional use or by use variants. Now, this section. Lacks in this, this provision lacks an intent section. Which makes it difficult to determine the exact reasons that motivated the creation of the overlay zone. But one can surmise from the RPA report that public safety concerns were paramount. The amount, the mandatory sixty-five foot setback from the cliff face at the base of cliff. And the mandatory thirty foot setback from the cliff face at the top of cliff are designed to maintain safe distances. Between the construction and the cliff. And there may also have been some scenic considerations, uh, playing a role. Similarly, the prohibition to build on any portion of a lot with a grade in excess of thirty percent. Or within ten feet of such lands similarly indicates a public safety concern. Now, as I mentioned previously, Union City, which has an overlay district with virtually identical provisions. That, that, um, article does have an intent statement, which is entirely focused on public health. And which reads in part. The purpose of this overlay district is to provide for reasonable control of development within areas of steep slopes. Along the palisades in the city of Union City. The regulations of this overlay district are intended to minimize the adverse impact caused by the development of such areas. Including but not limited to erosion, siltation, flooding. And surface water runoff. The disturbance of soil and construction and development on steep slopes and cliff faces. Creates an additional hazard to the lives and property of those dwelling on the slopes and below them. The most appropriate method of alleviating such conditions is through the regulation. Of such vegetation and soil disturbances, construction and development. Therefore, it is determined that the special and paramount public interest in these slopes. Justifies the regulation of property located thereon as provided below. Which is the exercise of the police power by the city. For the protection of persons and the property of its inhabitants and for the preservation of the public health, safety. And general welfare. Now, the PPOD does not have a separate mechanism for adjudicating, oh, and I should mention, I'm, I'm guessing. Because the two ordinances are so similar that when, uh, Jersey City adopted its. Ordinance, it may have had a similar, similarly worded statement of intent. Now, the PPOD does not have a separate mechanism for adjudicating requests. For relief from its provisions. And so I, I have to assume that the municipal land use law provisions governing. Bulk variances apply. However, it would seem to me that the provisions. Of forty fifty-five D dash seventy C one, A, B, and C. These are the bulk standard, uh, variances may not apply. As they are all geared to situations affecting a specific piece of property. With unique conditions not shared by neighboring properties. And in this case, we have a geologic feature that affects a multitude of contiguous properties located in ten different towns. So I'm not sure that, that, that a planner can build an argument in favor of that variance based on C one, A, B, and C. And to conclude, I would point out that the very first purpose of the municipal land use law is focused on promoting the public health, safety. Morals and general welfare. The building setbacks imposed by the PPOD are there to, among other things, promote public safety. So granting those, granting variances from those setbacks will pose unnecessary risks to public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. So does anybody, does anybody have any questions?
I do if the board doesn't.
Okay.
Okay, just a few, Mr. Rodriguez. At the beginning of your testimony, um, just to be clear, you said that you believe, and I'm paraphrasing you. You believe that a variance is required in this instance because the setback of the building is not far enough from the top of the cliff. Is that correct?
I'm persuaded by Mr. Gall's argument, yes.
Okay. And, uh, we can agree that the PPOD has specific setback requirements from the cliff face. Is that correct?
Uh, yes.
And then there is a separate.
Base as well.
Correct. Okay. And then there is a separate setback requirement from steep slopes. Is that correct?
Uh, in excess of thirty. Uh, percent plus ten feet.
Thank you. Yeah, you beat me to the clarification there.
It's, it's a rather comprehensive system. They didn't want to leave anything out.
And just, yeah, just for the record, you know, you, you referenced Union City, but the Union City regulations wouldn't control here regardless, correct?
No.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I just did.
I'm sorry, Gavin.
Oh, no, thank you. Um, I just had one, uh, question for redirect. Um, so, Mr. Rodriguez, the, I think, um. Chuck Harrington just asked you if you agree the thirty foot setback is supposed to be from the cliff face. And I just. I just wanted to read the definition to you and, and ask you if that's still your answer. The definition says. The minimum building setback line from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff. Shall be thirty feet. So does that alter your answer at all?
No, that's, that's where it, that's where it should be measured from.
Okay.
That's the definition, right? I'm not, I'm, I'm not making up my own definition.
Okay, but it's, it's not just about the cliff face. It's also about the top of the cliff, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, that's that's it for me. I think we have our unless the anyone else has any more questions, we can move on to our our fact witnesses.
Sure.
Okay, so Kern, are you ready?
Hopefully my. Yep, there you go.
Hi Karen, would you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And spell your name for the record.
It's K E R N, last name Weisman, W E I S S M A N.
Thank you.
And I'm just gonna, uh, there's some photos Kern wanted to present, so I'm just gonna help him by sharing my screen if that's okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And and just for the record, I am the chair of the RNA Development Committee, so. Should I get started?
Yes. Can everyone see my screen?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay, great. So I just I won't take much of your time. So I just wanted to. Bring to light and give you some visuals. Uh, of the conditions that Jeff referred to behind two forty two Ogden. So the first is a map that just shows you. Uh, that behind Ogden, along the edge of the cliff, there was a there was mountain road and and sometimes it's called Paper Mountain Road. Um, and that, as you can see from this map. Uh, was a road that was open. It was to pedestrians and vehicles. Uh, these to drive and it would connect Griffith to Franklin Street and also to the lower mountain road there. So I just wanted to show that and enter that into evidence showing that that was a complete, you know, usable and documented. Uh, through a street. We could then go to the next image. Yep. And then, uh, so here what you're seeing is, uh, this is what Jeff was referring to. So. Uh, behind the property there, you see where the the fence. Um, comes in like in dense. And then you you have a, uh, they put up a guardrail there, uh, you know, right in front of it. But you can see where that like over by where the car is that used to be just straight through, right, right in the edge of the cliff there. Um, so what happened here is at some point. The uh, the collapse happened and it took when I measured it, I I took these pictures on uh, on Tuesday. And when I measured the, you know, from the kind of the the cliff edge to to. To here where it had collapsed, it was about over. It was a little over twelve feet. So that, you know, obviously twelve feet is a lot, especially if you're only talking about a ten foot setback, right from the edge of the button. So.
Kern, could you just give the property address just so we have?
Oh, yes. So this was behind two forty two Ogden rear. Okay. And and then if you could just move to the next view, yeah. So and then this view shows just a little bit more of a perspective. So you can see how much of the road was actually destroyed during that collapse. So you can see that you're on top of the cliff. And that road basically collapsed and then the city. Uh, put in that fencing there in that, um, you know, that. Uh, barricades to basically preventing of falling in there, but they had to cut it. And so you can only now it's only for pedestrians. You can't drive through there anymore, obviously. Uh, so that gives you a kind of good perspective about how much roadway was lost or, you know, how much of the top of the cliff was lost during that event. Can you go to the next part? And then this just shows very simply the southern. So that other view was north facing. And this is south facing and just shows you that they then, you know, continued to block the whole thing off because they didn't want any cars. Uh, going through there probably for, you know, for public safety concerns. So I, um, that that concludes. I just wanted to get those in front of you because sometimes a picture, um, uh, you know, it tells a thousand words, if you will.
And, um, Kern, for the the map that was at the beginning, where where did you get that from?
Yes. So so there's a Hudson City Historical Society that published, um. A a document, you'll see it up at the top in the images as the Washington Village Ted Conrad that was published in two thousand and fourteen. Um, and so that's available publicly at the library online. And so that's where I would pull that map from.
And, um. Okay, is that everything you wanted to say?
Yep, yep. I just wanted to show that that those, uh, you know, if you look at it in real life, those concerns around safety. Um, I one one they've happened, right? Those collapses have happened. And we certainly want to avoid anything like that in the future. Um, and they can be very significant and impactful and 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 that's part of the reason why. The the P pod was created was to prevent these type of of issues. So I I appreciate it. Thank you.
Chuck, do you have any follow up questions or?
Just just a quick question to clarify, or I think it's clear clear on the record, but. Kern, I you you stated that all of these photos are behind two forty two Ogden Avenue, correct?
I said I took them from behind two forty two Ogden. So I that's where I came when I took the the photos.
Right, but it's just so we're clear, it's not. They're not photos of one fifty two Ogden Avenue, correct?
Oh, oh, no, they're not. That's correct.
Thank you. That's all.
Great, you're.
Okay, and, um, if if it's okay, I think we I think we were up to A five, so I think the map could. Be a six and the three photos could maybe be one exhibit as a or I don't know if the whole PowerPoint could be maybe a six.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. Um, so we just have one final fact witness, the president of the Riverview Neighborhood Association, Irene Borngraber.
Raise your right hand to be sworn. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And spell your full name for the record.
Irene, I R E N E. Borngraber, B O R N G R A E B E R.
Thank you.
Hey, um, thanks. Um, so I, um, Irene, how did you come to be involved in this zoning appeal?
So I am a Heights resident and now the president of the Riverview Neighborhood Association RNA. The RNA is an all volunteer grassroots neighborhood association who set aside our usual business and redirected our community's time and energy. To speak up against this project in order to protect the Palisade Cliffs. We believe that our testimony here is clear and the project violates the Palisade Protection Overlay District. So I'm here to tell you why that violation matters specifically to our community and why we've chosen as a neighborhood association to appeal.
And and what's RNA's position as an organization?
So protecting the Palisade Cliffs was actually the critical issue that sparked the foundation of the Riverview Neighborhood Association in the nineteen eighties. Before my time. Um, it is still crucial to the organization's work to this day. From an organizational perspective, in two thousand and one RNA advocated for and was part of the creation of. With Jersey City zoning, the Palisade Protection Overlay District, the P pod. With development coming to the heights, um, our two entities, among others, got together and decided that there was a need to protect the new. The unique nature of the Palisade Cliffs by setting terms for appropriate development. Which included establishing for the record what exactly was meant by things like top of the cliff. But in allowing this specific project for one fifty two Ogden to proceed with a different understanding of that definition. Zoning's determination seems to say to us. Yeah, but we're not going to hold anyone to the standard. So that was a shock to our community and our neighborhood association, and it shakes our confidence in this process. Um, as residents and neighbors, what good is having an agreement? If you toss it when it's inconvenient. That's how this seems to us and it sets a terrible precedent for the Palisades.
And, um, why, uh, does RNA feel it's important to enforce the regulation?
There are really two primary reasons why we believe the P pod must be enforced and the cliffs need to be protected from an RNA and a community standpoint. Um, the first really is from a safety perspective. In the nineteen eighties, you saw the photos that Kern presented where a portion of mountain road, the paved roadway. That was paved for cars to traverse along the top of the Palisade Cliffs, collapsed and went crashing down the mountain. Um, the roadway had been built over the top of what we would call the cliff face. The catastrophic collapse also informed the creation of what we incorporated as RNA at that time into the definitions of the P pod. I know that no one wants to talk about climate change, um, but it's getting warmer, it's getting wetter, it's raining more. And that means that more dirt is going to be moving around and sliding down the hill, and there is nothing that we can do to stop that from a global perspective. I live on Palisade Avenue and we've seen and felt these real changes, so we are concerned. Um, RNA still has the same safety concerns we had when the P pod was instituted in two thousand and one. Which is why from our perspective, it's vital that the setback provisions be enforced. Um, the second point is from an ecological perspective. RNA and zoning agreed on the P pod way back in the nineteen eighties because the Palisade Cliffs are not just a bunch of rock and dirt. They are a unique ecosystem composed of plants and insects and animals. And the centerpiece of what makes our neighborhood visually and ecologically special. Fallow space, passive space that isn't built upon is increasingly difficult to find in the heights. And yet it's vitally important to those of us who live here. Um, I am also the chair of the Friends of Riverview Park, who stewards the largest native plant garden in Hudson County. Which is right here in the heights. We and other community groups have been working to develop and connect more gardens and fallow spaces in the heights and beyond. So as to provide necessary migratory stopping points for pollinators and other animals, as well as educational opportunities for the public. But for every garden or wild space that we create, another one is destroyed, often by ignorance, often just because somebody didn't think about the consequences of their actions. So we're asking you to think here. These spaces are public natural resources. Do not allow another one to be taken away from our community and ecosystem in order to be privatized for development. So, um, that's all I have. Thank you for lis- thank you for listening to our concerns first and foremost of the community and for hearing this appeal. Um, we ask that you honor the terms of the setback of the P pod, which was put in place to protect our neighborhood's uniqueness, natural character and the safety of residents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck, presumably you have no questions of.
You you are correct, Mr. Watagood.
Cynthia, does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
So I think maybe Bridget might need it. Where are you, Bridget?
Please.
Oh, there you are. Yeah, I think Bridget might need a break. Is that right, Bridget?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, so. So on your.
I'll be back.
Come back in ten minutes or eight is eight thirty better? That's a little more since it's eight sixteen. Eight thirty.
Yeah, eight thirty would be fine.
Okay, great. See you then.
Hello?
Yes, Chuck, so. It's. Your presentation now.
Yes, okay. So, uh, thank you, members of the board. Um, I'm going to, um, start with our planner. Um, we're a little reverse here that Carolyn could give the basis as to why we believe we we are correct upon her review. Uh, of the Carolyn Wurstel. Um, so her review of the ordinance and interpretation. So with that said, I'm gonna move right on to Carolyn. I believe she's.
She's been before our board before, so assuming her license is still, uh. Active, uh, will accept her qualifications and Bridget, you could swear.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And spell your full name for the record.
Yeah, it's Carolyn Wurstel, C A R O L Y N, Wurstel, W O R S T E L L.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Wurstel, just, um, for the basis of your testimony, uh. Are are you familiar with the project that we are presenting tonight?
Yes, I am.
And and are you familiar with the Jersey City ordinances and the P pod ordinance in particular?
Yes, I am.
And have you reviewed them as they relate to the subject project?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and could you give us the benefit of your review and opinions?
Sure, be happy to. Um, so I I'd like to start and I apologize, this may be a little bit of a repeat from some of the things you've already heard. Um, but again, it I want to start off with going through what are the performance standards under the Palisades Preservation Overlay District or the P pod? Because really, I think what is at issue this evening is, uh, the specific language within the ordinance, as well as the definitions within the code. So, um. Under the P pod, there are three performance standards. The first performance standard says. The minimum building setback line from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff shall be thirty feet. There's a second performance standard that goes to say that for the purposes of preservation of the Palisades Cliff Base. No portion of any building or structure shall be constructed on that portion of a lot which has a grade. Prior to such construction in excess of thirty percent. Or in any portion of the lot which lies within ten feet of the portion having such grade. There's a third portion of the lot that really specifically deals with what happens at the bottom of the cliff, so I'm not going to read that. Uh, because it's really not, uh, applicable in this instance. Um, so as has been discussed and and we generally, the the purpose of the P pod and generally the purpose of the setbacks. Uh, steep slope setback requirements are twofold. They're to preserve an identified resource. Um, in this case, it's the rock formation that is the Palisades. Um, as well as the the, I guess, the the, um, the. The vegetation that creates some of the, uh, uh. Landscape and the the, um, that habitat that is the Palisades. And the second one is for safety to prevent, uh, development on steeply sloped areas, which as has been greatly attest, you know, can. Um, result in issues of landsides and and those areas. So. That's generally what is understood for the purpose of both the P pod and steep slopes, uh, standards in general. Um, but this first standard is is what has been at the issue most of the discussion this evening. Um, and really the language is is what is going on with the difference between the cliff face and the top of a cliff. Um, the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance defines the cliff face as a sheer nearly vertical slope of exposed bedrock. It defines the top of the cliff as the portion of a hill located above the cliff face over on Raline with Regolith, generally the plateau or hill of a crest. Or hill crest. There is no corresponding bottom of the cliff definition in the code. So there's these two different defined terms and they speak to different portions of a cliff. So you have your cliff face, which is that sheer vertical exposed bedrock. And then you have your, um. Uh, top of cliff, which is that portion above the cliff face that, you know, it's slope has a slope. And the ordinance itself, that first performance standard, the language specifically says that the building setback line is from the edge of the cliff. At the top of the cliff. It starts with, and it says from the cliff face. There is no cliff face on this property, uh, that has been, um, we we weren't able to, uh, find it. Um, and we, uh, it it's not there. There is no sheer vertical. So that is really sort of the issue is that there is no cliff faces defined by the code here. Um, and as my colleague Brian will will attest to later, you know, he, when he takes you through the engineering analysis. We attempted to, uh, provide a, uh, an analysis in order to be complete. Where we tried to to fit this site with this standard. Um, but it makes it very difficult because there's no cliff face. And the requirement, as I said, is from the edge of the cliff face. It's not written from the top of the cliff. That's not what the standard is. The ordinance has a second standard, which has not really been discussed much this evening. And that is, um, a a second standard which restricts development on steeply sloped areas. So that's with slopes of greater than thirty percent. Um, our project, we have identified those areas that is the areas in orange, which are shown on the, um. The plan and, um, it requires you're not allowed to build within those areas and requires a ten foot setback. This project is conforming with that requirement. Um, that is not, uh, nobody has contested that. Um, and again, as as can be shown by my colleague, we do meet that requirement. Um, if the petitioner's position is correct and that the required thirty foot setback under the first standard. Must be taken from where the site reaches the plateau or the point where there's no slope. Then there really doesn't appear to be a reason for there to be a second standard. Uh, because it there, there's just not an op- Because there's just not an opportunity for there to be a require, a need for this setback. Because the thirty percent slope would be subsumed within that standard. So it doesn't seem to make sense that you have a standard which would, you know, restrict on thirty percent if your first standard already restricts that development and is even more conservative. So I think overall that this application is consistent with the P pod. As I said, there's no cliff face on this property, which is the subject of that first standard. However, the project has been designed to provide the required setback from the thirty percent slopes consistent with that second standard. Overall, the project preserves the resource, which is the Palisades. The ground floor footprint is entirely within the green or the level portion of the site, which is currently a parking lot. It provides a minimum fifty-foot setback from the exposed rock on the site. And it preserves the vegetation on the slope. So it overall meets that intent and purpose of the P pod, which is to restrict development on steeply sloped areas and to preserve the resource, which is the Palisades.
I'm sorry, excuse me, do you have any illustrations of what you're commenting about?
Well, I can discuss it. I think my colleague Brian can take you through his analysis. But really, I've, we've been discussing, what are the portions of the cliff? And that was already brought into evidence and discussed. You had your cliff base. So I think I can hand this over to Brian to really take you through, showing you how we are consistent with that second standard, which is the thirty percent setback with a ten-foot buffer.
And you know, I'll defer to the board, but if you want to see more more plans, whether it's engineering or architectural, both of which were submitted as part of our interpretation. And if you want to see a little bit more, we do have that available. That's.
Okay, thank you.
I do.
Cynthia, where are you?
Thank you. Yeah, I just have.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Ms. Wurstel. So I was following you up until the end, and I think actually your testimony is kind of not totally different from our experts up until a certain point. So when you testified that there really is no sheer vertical cliff face.
Yes.
Okay. And you said, for that reason, the first performance standard requiring a thirty-foot setback is inapplicable.
My, in my reading, the requirement specifically says, the language says, "The setback line is from the edge of the cliff face." That is the first, that is how it's written, is the edge of the cliff face. There is no cliff face on this property.
Okay, but your, but your plans did identify a point at which there was a thirty-foot setback.
Yes, and I think my colleague Brian can take you through that. In order to be complete and trying to take a conservative position, we tried to essentially fit a round peg in a square hole. We tried to identify what we thought might potentially be, you know, a cliff face and show that we were more than thirty feet setback from that. But again, it doesn't actually meet the definition of a cliff face under the ordinance.
Okay, and if you were trying to comply with the second performance standard, which was that you have to, you cannot build on anything with a thirty percent slope or greater, and you have to be setback at least ten feet from a thirty percent slope, why aren't you just doing that? Like, why, if the first performance standard didn't apply, and you only needed to have a ten-foot setback, then why don't, why aren't you just, why doesn't your client just build a project with just a ten-foot setback then?
We do have it. It is shown on the plans, and my colleague Brian can take you through it and show that we are conforming with that requirement.
Okay, but it's, okay, all right, so I'll wait for your colleague. Thank you.
I have no further. So I have a quick question. So do, do either of those, are you saying neither of those performance standards apply?
No, I believe the second one applies because it specifically says, "No portion of any building or structure shall be construction on a portion of a lot which has a grade in excess of thirty percent."
So then why is thirty feet actually kind of drawn it to the plan?
Again, when we were developing these plans, we were trying to be conservative. We were trying to check all the boxes. And so we were trying to say, there is this standard of a thirty-foot setback from the edge of the cliff. As has been mentioned, you know, it's difficult, there is no cliff. So we chose a point that we thought was the most like a cliff, and I think Brian can attest to this more.
And in your.
To try to show some, so show compliance in order to check that box.
So in your opinion, as a planner, why does this ordinance exist?
I think this ordinance exists for exactly as everyone has attested, that it is to preserve the resource, to preserve the Palisades, and to prevent development on steep slopes. And so I, again, I think that this project does that. We are not on a steeply soaked site, you know, portion of the site.
Have you walked back to the fence line at the site?
I have not walked back to the fence line. I am aware that it does appear, you know, it does drop off. And again, I think my colleague can attest to that a little bit further with the diagram that has been done.
Okay, interesting.
I do have a follow-up question now for Carolyn. Maybe this will clear some things up. Where Carolyn, in your opinion, the criteria too that we are referring to with regard to the steep slope setback, doesn't, doesn't that essentially extend the thirty-foot required setback from a cliff face to capture and preserve the steep slope areas that are beyond the cliff face?
Yes, I think that it, that was probably its intent, and I think that that's what it does.
Because without that, hypothetically, you could have a cliff face, you could have a building thirty feet away from a cliff face, and then within a steep slope area, which was obviously not the intent of the second criteria.
I think hypothetically that that might happen, but obviously, again, on this site, there is no cliff face.
Thank you.
I have a question. Ms. Wurstel, do you agree or disagree that this is a cliff?
That is a good question. I'm not a geologist. I don't know if I could entirely answer that question. Again, early this evening, we were shown the graphic that talks about what are the components of a cliff. If there is no cliff face, is it a cliff that is above my pay grade? But regardless, it is within the Palisades Preservation Overlay District.
And does the P pod identify it as a cliff?
I don't believe the P pod specifically identifies it as a cliff. There's nothing in the P pod that shows, to my knowledge, there's nothing in the P pod that identifies a cliff face within the city.
Just asking about cliff, but thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Any further questions for Ms. Wurstel?
No, your next witness, Chuck.
Okay, then our next witness is our engineer, Mr. Brian Libeskin.
Ready your right hand to be sworn? You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state and spell your full name, please.
Sure, Brian Libeskin, B R I A N, L I E B E S K I N D.
Thank you.
And Mr. Libeskin has been qualified before the Jersey City boards in the past, and I'd ask that he be qualified again in that regard.
Yes, he's been before us, yes.
Thank you. So Brian, you are the engineer of record on this project, is that correct?
Correct.
And did you, you prepared and signed the civil plans that were submitted in this project, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you also prepared the engineering report that was submitted as part of this project, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so with that said, can you walk the board through your analysis as to the steep slopes here? And your analysis is how you came to the conclusion as to what might be the cliff face here?
Sure. So first, just going to give a little bit of context for the site, so.
And why, maybe we can mark this as, Mr. La Paglia, would it be R1 responded one, or I don't know, you tell me.
R1 would be a good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Brian, please continue.
So on the screen is an aerial view of the site, showing the limits of the property, dashed in yellow, and the ground floor footprint of the building shown red. As previously mentioned, the entirety of the proposed building falls within the existing parking lot on the site. And then also worth pointing out, the existing vegetation, you know, along the slope itself. Just a little housekeeping, because we'd like to add to the record if it's not already in there, the email correspondence dated July 5th, between City Planning and the Division of Engineering.
Mark that as R2.
So I'll read a part of that email. So Tanya, Mary Own, City Planning, forwarded the R analysis interpretation to the Division of Engineering to weigh in. And that same day, Paul Russo, at City Engineering, replied that both Lee Shwan from his office, and he reviewed the report, and believed that our interpretations aren't correct.
It just, nobody can really see that on the screen, Brian, so could you maybe just read the last paragraph of Ms. Mary Own's email to the engineering on July 5th?
Sure. The applicant believes their professionals have interpreted the setbacks correctly. I'm not an engineer, so I am not able to review analytically. So instead, I am relying on their professionals. Can you review their reports and determine if their interpretations are correct?
And now can you read Mr. Russo's response?
Sure. Both Lee Shwan and I reviewed their report and also believe that their interpretations are correct.
Thank you. So that being said, could you now, you know, continue with your testimony?
Sure. So I will pull up C11.
I'm sorry, I hate to, I'm sorry to introduce, interrupt, but I just, for the record, I wanted to say that I'm objecting to that being introduced into evidence. It's, Mr. Russo's not here, there's no analysis in his email. It's just a mere conclusory statement, so I just want to note my objection for the record.
And just to pile on to that, she sent an email out at one thirty-seven in the afternoon, and he replied at two-ten. Just saying.
I believe the, I believe the plans were delivered to them previously.
Okay, I'm just saying, it's, I'm looking at what's on the record, and that's interesting.
We've received review letters from City Engineering for the project, so this is not the first time they've reviewed these documents. So going through the steep slope plan, C11, which has, it's been talked about a lot tonight. So again, just to explain the color coding of this, the green area represents the gentle slopes, zero percent to ten percent. The yellow is, would be mild slopes between ten percent and thirty percent. And then the orange is that steep slope area, as defined by the P pod, is, you know, in excess of thirty percent. I will reiterate, you know, the opinion of my colleague that there is no cliff face, you know, as per the city definition of, you know, a near vertical face of exposed rock. We neither have a near vertical slope present on the site. And nor do we have an exposed rock of, that would qualify as a cliff. The exhibit that Mr. Gull showed of, you know, a typical cliff cross-section does not apply to this site. And the cross-section that's included in this steep slope plan, we believe illustrates that pretty clearly. This is drawn without exaggeration, you know, so you can understand what this site is doing, you know, west to east. So just to dig into the steep slope itself, at the top of that, it's elevation one oh four, at the bottom, around elevation sixty-one. So there's about seventy-nine feet horizontally between where we're measuring the start of the steep slopes and the bottom, and forty-three feet vertical. So that equates to, you know, an average slope along there of fifty-four percent. You know, it is our opinion, as stated in our analysis and testimony tonight, that this fifty-four percent in no way would qualify as a near vertical face, you know, to qualify as a cliff. So you two go through the two provisions that my colleague explained from the P pod that we considered for this analysis. The first is that, that's thirty-foot setback from the edge of the cliff face. You know, as noted, we do not believe that's an applicable requirement for this project, since there is no cliff face on the project site. You know, as we noted in our analysis, to be, to take the most conservative approach, we show what a thirty-foot setback from, you know, exposed rock along the slope would yield, and that even taking that position, the proposed development would still comply with the ordinance. So you, the, and then just to clarify, because I know it was raised previously about the, you know, the updates to the survey, you know, in working with City Planning and the RNA, we had the survey updated in February of this year, in the dead of winter, with limited vegetation, and only at that point did they observe some exposed rock along the lower half of that slope, which is represented in the hatch here. So again, that is the point where we conservatively are showing that thirty-foot setback. The proposed building itself, it was sixty-three feet away from that point at the base of the building. It can a levers out about twelve feet, so at the closest point would be about fifty-one feet from that exposed rock. And then the second provision. And then the the second provision of the P pod that we were analyzing is is the steep slopes. So the orange region, you know, which is the limits of that 30% is the the driving constraint for our proposed project. So taking that line and applying a 10 foot offset west toward Ogden Avenue defines what that that setback restriction is, so the the crosshatch on this exhibit represents, you know, the the area that, you know, we have to stay out of for for our proposed building. So as you're shown on the dimensions, the the cannoli proportion of the building is 11.2 feet away from the the 30% slopes. The base of the building is about 23 and a half feet from the steep slopes. Again, to reiterate, you know, the analysis and position that our design team, you know, the idea that, you know, we are trying to stay far enough away from the steep slopes at the top of the cliff to you provide stability is incorporated into this design and already reflected in this analysis. You know, the the 10 foot setback from the, you know, the steep slopes, you know, is for the purpose of, you know, creating a stable condition, you know, at the toe of the of the building. We you know, comply with that and then and due to some creative architecture, you know, have, you know, provided even more setback at the base of the building to stay, you know, even farther away from from those slopes. I will also like to to point out that the engineer's report that's included for the project includes a geotechnical engineering report, which includes boring logs and recommendations for the foundation of the building. To my knowledge, you know, Mr. Goal is not disputing any of the the findings of that report. You know, it is, the design team's position that this this building is designed appropriately for for the site. You know, and it accounts for the, you know, the presence of, you know, underlying soil conditions. So there are no further questions, that concludes my testimony.
Thank you.
Cynthia? Yeah, thank, thank you. Nice chairwoman, so I, Mr. Liebeskind, I did have some questions for you. So so these drawings reflect that the building will be constructed at a certain elevation. What what is the the current elevation of the building site?
At the location of the proposed building?
Yes.
So in the cross section, have the the elevations called out, this again is the existing grade. So at the western limits of of the property, it's about, you know, 107.4 and then is approximately a foot lower. So as we get closer to the that steep slope setback.
Okay, and I see you have a notation on there that says on the green section of the drawing that says existing grade, so so you're building at grade?
I can I'll pull up the grading plan for the proposed project. So finished finished floor for the building is 108.0.
Okay, so if if we could actually just go back to the steep slope plan, just because I had a couple more, that that's really the focus of my questions. Um, is it, so is it fair to say that the you're building on the top of the cliff?
I I don't believe that we have a cliff present on this site, so I would not characterize it as that. We are building at the the top of the steep slopes, but would not define it as a cliff.
Okay, so and and you would say that 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 where you have labeled existing grade that, is it your contention that that's not a plateau?
I mean, the the slope that's called out is 0.4, you know, you know, shows that it's it's relatively flat, I mean, that is the existing parking lot. You know, and as you've shown on that aerial exhibit, the proposed building falls within the footprint of that existing parking lot. So yes, and currently it is relatively flat in that section.
Okay, and 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 you're aware that the ordinance defines the top of the cliff as a as a plateau?
Again, as stated by Mr. Harrington and and my colleague, the top of cliff definition in the ordinance does not apply to this project, you know, the actual reading of the P pod, it was written as the the edge of cliff face.
At the top of my my understanding was that there was no cliff face, not the, I don't, I don't recall them testifying top of cliff doesn't apply. But okay, so um, so but on the, if you could go down to the second, the lower drawing. So you you did though on this drawing, you 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 did measure a 30 foot setback from a certain starting point? Could could you just move your pointer to where that is so that it? I guess it's reflected somewhere in the record. Or that so that, yes, thank you, okay, this is great, I like this close up, so. So what is the elevation of the starting point for the 30 foot setback?
At at this point, around elevation 82.
Okay, and then what's the elevation of this of the ending point for the 30 foot setback?
At the top of that would be around elevation 100.
So it is, is that more than a 30% slope in that in that area?
Yeah, it the average slope within this orange orange region is that 54%.
So aren't you prohibited from building there anyway?
Correct, the this entire region that is that is hatched is the restricted area, so that includes all of the existing slopes in excess of 30% and then 10 feet beyond.
Okay, so, but and then but you but, okay, so you put that on the plan, but you're saying it's it's not really relevant.
Correct, yeah, and as part of the discussions with the community and city planning, you know, we included this just to illustrate that even taking this, you know, conservative approach, you know, that provision would would not change the compliance of the project.
Okay, so so is the, now that we're looking at this close up, where's the 10 foot setback on the plan?
That's this area here.
Okay. Okay, and that's within the area where the slope is less than 30%?
Correct, the eastern limit of that is where the slope starts 30% or above and then going into the, you know, the mild gentler slopes.
Okay, so I'm sorry.
No, I mean, you, for the question that you asked my colleague, this really was the driving, you know, constraint for for the proposed project. We have a large site, that it's an L shaped lot that wraps the hill and you know, driveway access in the southern portion and then you squeeze further, you know, on the east in this your 10 foot setback from the steep slopes, you know, was the sort of basis for the the architecture that you see, you know, that, you know, extends out, you know, close to that point.
Okay. And the cantilevered portion, can you just like show us where that is?
Yeah, that's this dash line here.
Oh, so the building has a projection from the face of of the building?
Yeah, at ground floor, it is the shaded, the gray shaded area here and then has a butterfly cantilevered balconies that work up the building. And at the the top floor, where it extends the farthest eastward, it's 11.2 feet from that steep slope area.
Okay, um. So when you, I'm sure you read the the or the performance standards and the P pod ordinance and when when it says the minimum building setback line from the edge of the cliff face at the top of the cliff shall be 30 feet. What what do you, what was, did you think at the top of the cliff was supposed to mean?
I and as explained by Mr. Gold in his illustrative sketch of of a cliff, as as most people would think of it, you have that your near vertical face. It it levels off at the bottom and then levels off at the top. And where it, you know, levels off at the top would, you know, would be, could be defined as the edge of cliff face at the top of cliff. As as previously stated, though, we do not have a cliff face, we do not have a near vertical the slope, you know, of exposed bedrock, and so there is no point where we can measure the top of a cliff face in the absence of a cliff.
But is there a point where this where this steep slope meets the the horizontal portion of the site?
I mean, you, we drew this, you know, without exaggeration, so we, you know, we could just show you how this looks, you know, in section, and it is not, you know, the the drop off that that the cliff exhibit, you know, would would suggest, it's a pretty uniform slope from that starting point down to, you know, the the property limits on the eastern edge, so. I think we, the professionals who've testified tonight are all in agreement that there is no point that you could point to, you know, on this the slope analysis to say that is, you know, the cliff face, it does not apply, you know, for this.
Would that, would, do you know whether that would be true of other sites within the the P pod overlay?
I mean, there are areas of the the P pod that have exposed rock and have more of a traditional your vertical face. There aren't many such sites, but there are definitely sites that have closer to that that definition than, you know, what what's present on this site.
Okay, now, did you, um, did you do a a prior steep slope analysis that was submitted to the city at an earlier, before you submitted this one?
So again, the, you know, at the request of the the city and and the RNA, we had the survey revised, you know, in February this year. So as part of that updated survey, this steep slope analysis was revised to reflect the those the survey points.
Is is that because of the prior survey was old?
We were going back and forth, you know, on this very topic and thought that, you know, another visit to the site to pick up additional points, you know, could be beneficial, again, going in February when vegetation was was limited, you know, allowed the surveyor to see the surface conditions that that were invisible, you know, in the fall, when they conducted the the original survey.
Um, do you have any any other experience with compliance with this P pod ordinance?
I mean, our firm has has worked on several projects in the in the P pod. I have worked on on prior applications with with a steep slope analysis, similar to what was was done for this project.
Did any of them require variance?
I I could not say off air.
Okay, and did you consider any other approach to measuring the 30 foot setback in your earlier set of plans?
I believe, you know, we we took it at the, you know, close to the eastern edge of the the project limits where we no longer had survey data, and that's one of the things that was updated in the latest survey was you know, additional points at the the bottom of you know, offsite.
Okay, well, I guess.
So previously, the 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 topographic survey stopped, you know, at the the property limits, so we didn't, we did not have a, you know, a cliff face that indicated on that survey. But if one were to to say that there was a cliff just off our site, you know, we we showed that, you know, taking it, you know, at the eastern edge, you know, would not come into play for for the project.
Okay, and, um, you when you're saying the eastern edge, is that the base of the cliff?
Again, our our position from the original application has been that there is no cliff face on on the site. You know, that the 10 foot setback from the steep slopes has been the, you know, the only constraint in in the P pod ordinance that applied to to the project. But, you know, again, take trying to to show, you know, a conservative the offset of a cliff, we've depicted that, you know, on the plans.
Okay, and how did you, I'm just, on the earlier iteration of the plans before you updated your your survey, how, where were you measuring from?
I mean, again, the the application, you know, in front of the board tonight is you know, updated with the the current survey. So I I don't want to confuse the record by providing testimony about the, you know, the prior version.
Okay. Okay, I think I think that's it for my questions.
I have no question for Brian at this time.
I I just have a question. For constructing the the building itself, it's an eight story building, which is unusual for this block. But that's the way the zoning is, I was surprised to see it that way. But how how deep do the pilings go?
I said, the the geotechnical engineering for the the project was was not included in the application. I am not qualified to to speak about the, you know, the proposed design for that, the geotechnical engineering report that was conducted, you know, evaluated the existing soil conditions and provided recommendations for the foundation design, but the, you know, the the full structural design of the building, you know, has not been.
When when you, when you've walked along the eastern edge of of the property, which you don't think is a cliff, did you see any erosion?
And there's there's vegetation on the ground.
All right, all right, that's fine.
I have a question. Would you anticipate that any kind of construction and machinery in that area would shift the foundation that you're in in this area? That you're, that in, in this area?
You're saying for the foundation of the proposed building?
Yeah, and, and where the cliff, like all of this, where, where, where you plan to develop. Would that, would that cause a shift basically because you're going to be drilling, you're going to be using machinery? How is that going to hold then this cliff? Is that going to create a shift in, in the, uh, in the earth?
Uh, I would not expect, you know, any concerns about stability. I mean, the, the contractor would. Um, you know, would you use the, you know, appropriate means and methods to. You know, to stabilize the, the slope, you know, prior to the starting work.
Hmm, okay. All right.
Um, a- again, the, the, the full footprint of the building is, you know, within that, um, existing parking lot, you know, at the. The relatively flat section of, of the site, so. Yeah, deep.
That, that would be reviewed by, uh, the construction department when they hand in construction site plans, I mean, construction plans, correct?
Um. Chuck, do you want to? Way in?
What?
Sorry.
Well, that's about foundations and equipment and pilings and all that, that would be part of their construction plans that they submit, right? To the construction code office?
Right, and it, it would be, and then it's, it's my understanding, um, from the, the architect just texted me that. Uh, there wouldn't be any pilings here, there would be footings on the rock.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions from? The commissioners?
Ju- just so I understand, um. The, the chart, I mean, the diagram, you have thirty feet and then another thirty-three feet. So is it sixty-three feet from that point on that? Just want to make sure that that's what that is.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Harrington, does that conclude your presentation?
Oh, yeah, a- actually, I have one more question, um. Because with that sixty-three foot measurement.
Mm-hmm.
How, how did? You identify the, the cliff face at, at that point?
Uh, so as explained, I mean, uh, you know, we don't. Um, you believe there's, you know, a cliff face, you know, present, um, but we are. Um, taking that measurement from the limit of the exposed rock that was observed, um, in the updated survey.
Okay.
So, so in essence, it's the best possible point that you can choose from to begin that measurement, correct?
Uh, yes, if, if, uh.
Like looking at the whole site, you start your thirty feet from where you think your best judgment. Professional judgment is where the cliff would be or might start or be the best starting point to work from. Absence of a clear. Uh, obvious cliff for cliff face.
Uh, correct, I mean, we, we would, you know, omit that dimension entirely, um, and say it's not applicable, but. Um, you know, as part of the discussions, um, we say planning and, and the RNA. Uh, you know, in, include this, you know, to show that, yeah, you know, even if we were to take. Um, that setback from, from that point, you know, we would still be compliant with the P pod.
Okay. Francisco, do we have, um? Um, I. Calls from the audience?
Uh, I'm sorry, just, I just wanted for one minute to put my engineering expert back up just to make one simple point. About the, how to interpret the thirty percent steep slope. Uh, performance standard.
Okay.
Um. So, uh, Mr. Gall, are you? Are you with us?
I am.
Hey, so, um, did, did you have anything to add to how to interpret that second performance standard?
You mean the ten feet?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, the, it's in the, 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 the ten foot offset of a thirty percent slope is. Is essentially in the overlay district. You can have a slope. Or the, the top of slope. That comes up to a plateau and then have another where it may jump up again or have another slope. In excess of thirty percent, and then that would apply to that area. So it really is to cover those areas that are sort of outside of the, the limit of, of the cliff itself.
Okay, thank you.
No more questions? All right. Francisco? Do we have any comments or questions from the audience?
Yes, I do see several hands raised. I will be promoting the first hand Lynn Mullins.
Okay.
Actually, can I do that, thank you?
You definitely can.
Thank you.
And please, for those that are in the attendees, if you do wish to comment, raise your hand. Please.
Okay.
I think, uh, I think, uh, uh. Madam Chairperson here, we, we should probably be limiting. The, the public to people who are not within the RNA. If you're at the RNA, we, we've already heard from your president and we've heard from, uh, Kern. So, uh. We don't need people coming in being duplicative of that. If there's something, somebody outside the RNA, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
In the RNA, I think all you need to say is I'm in the RNA and I agree with, uh. Uh, I, Irene, uh. Was some, uh, Born Gar- Grabber and, and Ken Weissman.
Okay.
Have to hear over and over again as to, as to why you agree.
Absolutely, okay.
And then can you please, uh, show your camera or turn on the camera, please?
Uh, yes. There I am.
Would you raise your right hand to be sworn?
I.
Do you swear or affirm testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And spell your full name, please?
Uh, L Y N N. M U L L I N S.
Thank you.
Uh, we've heard lots of discussions about how to measure an irregular, um, natural cliff. But only one sentence mentioned that this building is planned at eight stories high, which has nothing to do. At all with the other buildings in that neighborhood. And that's a leftover from when that neighborhood was zoned very differently, including even industrial space. I was hoping that zoning could rectify that mistake. I know that zoning in general is loathe to change. A zoning for a space, but that has nothing to do with the neighborhood. That's a scary, scary prospect to just put a giant building up. And leave it there in the middle of the road. Never mind that it's all glass and it will have tremendous effect on birds in that flyway area. So I was wondering if anybody could talk about that. Thank you. Thank you.
Promoting Anthony Townsend.
Hello?
Hi, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Spell your full name, please?
Uh, Anthony Townsend, A N T H O N Y, T O W N S E N D.
Thank you.
Uh, so I just wanted to add, I'm a resident of the heights and I have reviewed the various versions of these plans as they've been. Filed on the open data portal, uh, and what's really concerning to me is that the land form analysis. In the current set of plans is not complete. Uh, it was substantially revised from the first set that was filed earlier in the process. Um, and one of the questions you might have had when you were looking at that last diagram. Is what does the slope look like on the northern half of the site? Uh, in the second set of plans that was submitted, that portion of the land form analysis was covered up. Uh, by the, um, the elevation diagram that was added. And there were also two changes, um, at the northernmost extent of the site and the southernmost extent of the site. Where the first land form analysis had indicated some red, uh, which I believe were sixty to ninety degree slope areas. Um, those are both missing from the revised land form analysis and so. Um, in addition to all the other errors and emissions that have been pointed out. You know, this has really been a, um, process where we've seen lots of, uh, errors, emissions. Potential misrepresentations of the land form. And I think, you know, really demands that you give it a very close level of scrutiny. Thank you.
Thank you.
Promoting Mark.
Mark, we can't see you. And we can't hear you now.
Trying to unmute.
Okay. All right.
Raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Spell your full name?
Um. Mark, M A R K, Miltoner, M I L T N E R.
Thank you.
And, uh. Really, I thank everybody for sticking it out. This has been a long process and, uh. I tried to pay attention as much as I could. I am like the other two folks, I guess, part of the, the heights and, uh. I'm actually, if I were to represent more than just the public, I represent, uh, the twenty owners, I'm on the board. Uh, the condo board of Pullman's Hall. What I've heard, I learned more tonight than what I had read in the plans. And in, uh, P pod, as people are fond of saying now, so. I saw even more things to be worried about, and I don't mean this from an emotional standpoint, I mean, generally scared about, uh, any compromise that might occur on the cliff.
Hmm.
Uh, but mine is not an educational view. Where I've heard tonight and what I did see enough of was a difference of professional opinion. Um, uh, and it's just my opinion of which side I would take on that, but I think it definitely bears more scrutiny. And, uh, from a variance perspective, I think we're definitely knocking at that door. And I apologize for my tiredness and not being able to be very articulate about everything, but from that standpoint. Not just from safety, but also from the nature around it, from something I just realized, uh, because I was reminded of it, the birds, especially the. The hawk that's been living here for twenty years. Um. Flying into that building would be a horrible thing. For sure, an all glass building, eight stories tall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, Vin- Benny, I'm just wondering if, uh, you know, going forward, um. The folks providing testimony should also begin giving their addresses. I mean, everybody who's spoken so far is, is local, but I think it'd be helpful to know that.
Yes, Bridget.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, also, Benny, um. Uh. You, in the beginning of the meeting, you said, uh, the question. We are discussing the distance between the building and this, the, this, the, the, the. The curve that's, uh, not the heights of the building or anything else. So can we mention that to the audience? So we're gonna have to repeat the same thing again and again? The distance between the building and the cliff, nothing else.
That's all we're, that's all we're here for, not the planet.
Yes, please, yes.
It's just the sideline.
Then I get that again, so we don't hear it again. Thank you, please.
Good, good, good point to note.
I've, I promoted Marshall.
Hi.
Oh. Would you raise your right hand to be sw- sworn?
Yes.
Where or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Spell your full name and provide your address.
Marsha McGogney, M A R S H A, M C G O G N E Y. My address is one four zero Ogden Avenue.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks everyone. I know this has been a real, um, a long meeting. Um, I just wanted to say, as someone who lives in the closest possible proximity to this proposed build site. That I also just have a lot of concerns based on the integrity of the steep slope slash cliff that had been raised tonight. And to me, it seems incumbent upon everyone in decision making on this to really use. Um, you know, a preponderance of, uh, an abundance of caution in moving forward with anything that might stable, uh, destabilize. The soil or rocks, as mentioned earlier, for those of us who live right here on that front facing slope. Thank you so much.
Thank you, okay.
And at this time, there are no other hands raised.
Do we have any comments, um, by the commissioners, questions? No. Okay. So. Can we have then a motion to, for Z twenty-three zero four zero?
If I could just make a few comments to sum up.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and, and maybe, uh, my counterpart wants to also, um, so. Um, I, I think we, we, what's interesting is this started as what we thought might be a battle of the experts, but the experts did seem to agree. On a certain number of things. I think they agreed on the purpose of the ordinance, which is to preserve a natural resource. And most importantly, safety. I think they agreed there is not a sheer vertical. Uh, cliff face and, um, I think, actually, I kind of agreed with the way Ms. We're still put it that, that. We're sort of trying to put a round peg into a square hole because the ordinance. Uh, seems to contemplate, there's a point at which the top of the cliff meets the cliff face, but. But what I would, but what we have heard that I, that I take issue with is we, we heard. People contend that. The Palisades, which is an ancient geological formation. That this ordinance was put in place to protect is not a cliff. And I, I found that incredible. And I, I would just say in general, there are very few instances, I mean, when I'm reading a contract or I'm reading an ordinance or I'm reading a case. Nothing's ever perfect, like you, you know, you, it, it, it doesn't envision every single circumstance where you're going to have to apply the law. Um, but, okay, here we don't have a perfectly sheer cliff face. It cannot. To me, it just, it just cannot, I can, I could never accept that the people who passed this ordinance, who drafted this ordinance. Intended that this ordinance would not protect the Palisades and that it would not require a thirty foot. Setback at the top of the cliff. And I think from the drawing, you can see there is a clear top of the cliff. There's a place where that ends, there's a place where the slope begins and our expert told you. You take the thirty feet from there and the ordinance is very clear when it talks about the top of the cliff. It talks about a plateau. We clearly have that. We have a place where the plateau intersects with what starts to become. A slope and that's where you measure the thirty feet from. And if it's not a perfect vertical sheer face, I don't think that's a reason. To just throw your hands up and say, oh, guess what? We, we, we don't have to enforce this ordinance, um, but, so I, I, I would ask you. To please err on the side of caution, on the side of safety and on the side of enforcing our own ordinance. To rule, uh, to uphold our appeal that a, a, a variance for the set, and we're not saying no set. They can't have a setback. All we're saying is a variance should be required. For the thirty foot setback if they intend to build the building in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harrington?
Yes, uh, thank you, um, try to be brief, uh. Yeah, I mean, this, this issue before you is, is, is all about, do we comply with the setback requirements in the P pod? Um, and the answer to that is, is, is yes. Um, the experts do agree. They all agree that there really isn't any cliff face here. So without a cliff face, there is no setback from something that doesn't exist. But our, you know, our professional took a, a conservative approach and said. Here's the exposed bedrock, we'll say, you know, we'll establish this as the cliff face because it's a, a steep slope area. And we're still well beyond, uh, the thirty, thirty feet from there. Um. And, and then what happens is that, that doesn't extinguish, uh, the, the.
And, and then what happens is that, that doesn't extinguish the necessity to, to protect the cliffs and be far away from the steep slopes, because the second criteria comes into play. And that, that makes, that requires you to be ten percent, ten feet from the steep slope area, which is defined as thirty percent or more grade, so it doesn't, it doesn't allow a, a project to build any, any closer to the cliff face that, that has a steep slope, that, that kind of supplants that or supplements it, if you will. And what you heard, you know, from Mr. Mr. Gall and Mr. Rodriguez, is they both refer to a variance being required from the top of the cliff. And if you look at the orders, you heard a lot about what the requirements are, there is no setback requirement from the top of the cliff, it is from the cliff face that's at the top of the cliff and then from the steep slope area. So, you know, that's, that would be a variance that's not even required. So, and it would be creating a new criteria. So, we, you know, we believe we're compliant with, with the, the requirements of the PPOD, we believe that it protects the, the, the Palisades as, as designed, and, and we are sufficiently, and sufficiently and within compliance of the required setbacks.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? So, can I have a motion?
Actually, I mean, is city staff gonna say anything?
Uh, no, just to the fact that I am not a certified engineer, I do not have any two cents to put into this application, it is an appeal, therefore, the applicant has the burden of proof.
Yeah, but, but it's, yeah, but it's, it's also, I mean, you don't need to be a weatherman to know which way the, the wind blows, this is about interpreting a statute and what you think as a planner and, and ordinance and what you think as a planner, it's, it's supposed to mean. I mean, I, as somebody who lives in the Palisades area, I live on, on Ogden Avenue, when we were all excited that this PPOD got passed, I thought, I thought it was about having a thirty-foot buffer and what was proposed by the applicant about things being permissible in that yellow area, having walked over to the site today, I'm just, I, I, I'm really actually surprised that, that this is how, what we thought was this great protection is kind of flipped on its head. So, I'm, I, I will, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see, see what goes, but I am in favor of the appeal and overturning the zoning officer's opinion.
Okay. Thank you, Kate. Anyone else, no?
Yeah. If I could say a couple of things, I, I want to just commend all the, the people who were, the experts on both sides who spoke from their perspectives, they, they seemed sincere in, in viewing this, the way they see it. Obviously, being involved in some of the things that have occurred in the city over the years, I also assume that our staff and obviously from the, as this is an appeal, the previous, these things were probably addressed in the last meeting regarding all the other stuff that came up, and now this is simply an appeal over the issues of, of the setback. I want to say, looking at this, I think that the, it's, it's sufficient enough in the way that it was demonstrated that the setback in this case is, as I said, sufficient enough, however, a number of issues came out, I think, sort of warrant maybe staff looking at potential changes or amendments, or certainly take another look at this whole thing for future projects that come up. Obviously, it's a concern to many, it'll be a concern to many tomorrow as well. So, based upon this, what I saw today, I mean, I'll vote against the appeal, but like I said, encourage more dialogue on this in future things up in the area.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so Vinnie?
Oh, let's, let's clarify what we're doing.
Okay.
There's two types of motions you can make. One is to uphold the appeal.
Okay.
Which means in effect, you're reversing the zoning officer's determination. Or you can make a motion to deny the appeal, which means you're upholding the zoning officer's determination.
You're opposing, is that opposing, did you say opposing, did you say opposing?
No, I said the other motion you can make is to deny the appeal.
Okay.
If you make a motion to deny the appeal, it means you are upholding, upholding the zoning officer's determination. Those of, either or.
Okay. So, do we have to make a motion on this, or do we go? Cisco, Francisco, do we ask individual commissioners their opinion, I don't know, help me out here, because.
So, if somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make, I, I guess it's either, as Vinnie said, it's either make a motion to deny the appeal or, as he said, it's completely opposite of that, it really doesn't matter, so in essence, I'll just make a motion so we can move forward to deny the appeal, obviously, you vote the way you want to accordingly on what that means, just for simplicity's sake, folks.
Right, so if you, the motion which needs a second is to deny the appeal, which means you're upholding the zoning officer's determination, so do we have a second on that? Doesn't mean you have to vote that way, but just to move things along.
Second?
Second amendment, okay.
Okay, Francisco, you're up.
So, on a motion to deny the appeal, Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zablicki? You're.
Yes, yes.
Commissioner Park?
So, I don't believe that sufficient evidence has been provided to confirm that a cliff does not exist, and therefore, I do not, I, I say no.
Commissioner Donley?
I vote no, I think it's absurd to ignore the words "top of cliff" in the ordinance.
And Vice Madam Chair, Aru?
I say no.
The motion carries, four in favor, three opposed.
Correct.
The appeal is denied. Okay.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, yes, thank you.
Thanks very much, everybody.
So, unless there's anything further, there's just two resolutions to memorialize and memorialize, excuse me, but other than that, the, the the agenda is finished, correct?
That's correct.
And go.
So, should we, let's memorialize, only two resolutions we have. The first case was heard on May eleventh. That's case Z twenty-two dash zero eight three. It was a D one use variance, the applicant was KDLI nine LLC, that's three forty-five Central Avenue. If you remember, that was the, the Temple case, for lack of a better word. Present on May eleventh, where Chairman Jacobs, Commissioners Green, Park, Shadid, Arroyo, Silva and Coyle. And that application only received four votes in favor and three opposed, which means that the application was denied. So, who are in favor of memorializing that is?
Vinnie, real quick, Vinnie, real quick, do I vote on it, Vinnie, I wasn't there?
No, we're just, we're just doing a memorial.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that Vinnie wasn't there.
No, you can, yes. So, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next application is Z twenty-three dash zero two three, the applicant was Two Twenty Broadway Management LLC. It was a D one use variance that was heard on June fifteenth. On June fifteenth, present were Commissioners Green, Shadid, Arroyo, Allen, Patel and Silva. And Commissioner Green was the acting chairman that evening, that passed, six in favor, none opposed. So, all in favor of memorializing that?
Aye.
Aye.
And that concludes the resolutions, and I don't think we have anything further to discuss, do we?
How about when we're gonna meet for our get-together, Cisco? Do we have, do we have a consensus?
We can close the public.
Oh.
This way, that.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
That I can.
We're gonna have.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's get to the good stuff.
Well, do we have, I guess we have to click off, is?
Yeah, I have.
Couple more people.
I wish it's just an automatic button to remove everyone in the attendee.
Yep, we'll wait for you.
One more person. And we're good. Okay.
You're still recording, Francisco, just so you. Yeah.